Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Tuesday, the 27th of July 2010. We're here in the John Farrow Council chambers. Want to welcome our guests that are here, those members of the public who've taken time out of their day to join us for this meeting, as well as those viewers on Channel 35, or through the internet, or through council phone. There are four or five ways you can follow your council meetings: here, live in person in our downtown chambers, in our remote facilities, both in San Pedro and in Van Nuys. If you live closer to those places, you can go to the city halls in those respective neighborhoods and testify, or watch our council meetings remotely from there. Third, you can use the television, and throughout the city's cable systems, we have Channel 35 which broadcasts these meetings live and rebroadcast them on the same day in the evening. And through the internet at lacity.org, you can click on the links and catch live webcasts of our council meetings. We also, for your convenience, archive all of our past council meetings for your edification, and so you can review any past meetings. And finally, if you're not close to any of those, you can always use your telephone and call the following number: (213) 621-CITY. That's (213) 621-CITY. And you can listen in to audio proceedings of our council meeting, as well as any of our committee meetings, too. Our agendas are made available in city facilities, as well as online at lacity.org. Those are made available 72 hours in advance, or 24 hours in advance for our special meeting items. And if you'd like to be heard on any of the items that are on that agenda today, please feel free to fill out a speaker card in the back, and hand that to one of the sergeants at arms, or to one of the city staff in our remote facilities in Van Nuys and San Pedro. We do have 10 members. I want to thank those members who are here: Councilmembers Cardenas, Han, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Wesson, and Zine. Mr. Alakon, Mr. Coetz, and Mr. Smith are excused today. We still are awaiting the following two late council members: Mr. Krikorian and Mr. Rosendahl. But we do have 10 members, which constitutes two-thirds of our body and a quorum. So with that, Mr. Clerk, if you'll please call the roll, we'll begin the meeting.
Alakon, Cardenas, Han, Weezer, Coetz, Krikorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Wesson, Zine, Gossetti, 10 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
All right, first order of business, please.
Approval in a minute.
All right, Ms. Han moves. Mr. Labange seconds, without objection. Those will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Zine moves, and Mr. Parks approves, or seconds, excuse me, without objection. That will be approved as well. It's now time for a salute to the flag. If I can ask everybody in council chambers to please rise for a pledge of allegiance. And, Mr. Weezer, would you lead us?
Mr. President, please stand everyone in the chambers. Put your right hand over your heart. Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
I am the State of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Next order of business, if we can please run through the agenda. And colleagues, if I can direct your attention to the agenda while we go through the items that are before us today.
Mr. President, before beginning the agenda, there is a number of requests to continue items.
Okay.
On item, item one, there is a request to continue that matter to August 10th.
All right, let's go ahead and continue the nomination of our Board and Water Power Commission, or to the 10th. Next items to continue?
Item eight, there's a request to continue that matter to August 4th.
Okay, if there's no objection, to continue item eight to the 4th of August, we'll do so. Next items to continue?
Items 10 and 30, there's a request to continue that matter to August 3rd.
Yes, that's my request. If there's no objection, we'll continue items 10 and 30 until the 3rd. Next items?
Item 18, there's a request to continue that matter to August 4th.
All right, without objection, we'll continue 18 until the 4th.
And the final request, item 28, there's a request to continue that matter to August 18th.
There's no objection, colleagues, we'll continue that one as well. Seeing none, so ordered. Next items, and we'll have to skip the ordinances while we await Mr. Krikorian and Mr. Rosendahl. If the sergeants at arms could inquire to their whereabouts, it's now after 10:17, and we need them to have 12 members in a quorum. Next items that are not ordinances, please.
Items 1 through 18, with the exception of the items that were continued, or items for which public hearings have been held.
All right, colleagues, we're going to call 2 through 7 special while we await 12 members. If we can call any specials from 9 to 17. Mr. Reyes?
Item 15, please.
Mr. Reyes calls 15 special. Other specials, colleagues? Seeing none, let's go ahead and take up the balance. Please prepare the roll, and please tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Thank you, those are approved. We'll send 12 forthwith, without objection, please. Next items?
Items 19 through 32, or items for which public hearings have not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration.
All right, without objection, those are now before us. We'll have to hold 19 through 24 as well while we await 12 members. Do we have any cards from the public on any of these items?
Yes, there are cards on items 29.
Okay. If there's no other cards on other items, we'll open and close the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Krikorian. We're still awaiting Mr. Rosendahl. Let's go ahead. If there are any other specials, colleagues, 25 through 32. 25 through 32. If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
On the supplemental agenda, items 33 through 35, or items for which public hearings have not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, if there's no objection to consideration, those are before us. Do we have any cards from the public on this?
Yes, there are cards on 34 and 35.
Okay. And, Ms. Perry?
Mr. President, I'd like to continue item 34 for one week. And on 35, I would like to discuss 35 A, B, and C, and we can move forward, move D and E.
So you want to, we have cards from the public, you want to call that special as well to talk?
Yeah, I just want to call 35 A, B, and C special, which leaves 35 D and E. And we can move on that.
We'll call that special for you. And if there's no objection, to continue item 34 until the 3rd of August. Seeing no objection, so ordered. And, so that leaves us 33. If nobody wishes to call 33 special, and we'll close the public hearing, we do not have cards on that. Let's go ahead and please open the roll on 33, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right, if we can send that forthwith, please. And, Mr. Zine?
5 and 27 forthwith, please.
All right, 25 and 27, without objection, we'll send those forthwith as well. And that will take us to our general public comment. That is for items that are not on today's agenda, but nevertheless, under the jurisdiction of the Los Angeles City Council. And our first speaker is Dr. Clyde Williams. We have a podium and a timer to help speakers guide their time. After Dr. Williams, we'll go next to Donna Perman in Van Nuys. Good morning.
Good morning. Dr. Clyde Williams, 411 Fiber Road, El Serrano, Northeast LA. Yesterday was an interesting brush fire clearance appeal committee meeting. It clearly showed that the entire brush fire clearance procedure for LA Fire Department is flawed. A lot of people didn't even know that there was a board of fire commissioners' presentation the week before, and there was only one person that came to that. Whereas yesterday, it went on for a couple hours, and has continued until next Monday. The whole brush fire clearance situation is almost a fiasco. I don't know how they apply it. Nobody seems to know who does what to who. And, in fact, this last year, they submitted a notice to all of the people, supposedly in the 130,000 parcels, that they could do self-inspection. And if they didn't do the self-inspection, they would just have to pay $13. So everybody paid $13, even without an invoice. So they were confused on that. They're still confused. It's going to be an issue in various neighborhood councils, as people start realizing that they're going to change it from $13 to $23 for next year, and then probably up to $50 or $100 the year following, because it makes money for the fire department. However, it's not consistently and adequately applied to all areas. There are severe areas within their zones which have never been cleared. So it needs to be fully reviewed, audited, and perhaps the liens deferred for at least one year for all parcels found in quotes "violation." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Donna Perman in Van Nuys.
Hello, hello. Anyway, when are you coming back to Van Nuys Chamber? Who knows, if ever?
You're not on yet.
Oh.
There you are.
Okay, hello. When are you coming back to Van Nuys Chamber? Who knows, if ever? We should boycott airports, because now they want to do body scans. Besides being invasive, what about the gamma rays that lets out? Radiation without reason. Miriam told me to tell the public, here's the city council salaries introduced by Michael Wu in 1989. He was on the city council with Jackie Goldberg, Hal Berndsen, Nate Holden, and Michael Wu put it on the ballot, Prop H. City council salaries tied it to the, tied the salaries to municipal judges. Miriam was opposed to it. Miriam was there, and she was opposed to it. Was opposed to keep them honest, unlike the city council in Bell, but I'm not so sure. Hidden corrupt and tied with the CRA, Large Corporations, AIG. Erv Rubin and former President John Farrow told Miriam to go back to kitchen. They'll take care of city business. May Erv Rubin rest in peace. It's male chauvinism, male chauvinism, and it's worse. We have to watch our politicians, so we take the consequence, so it's higher property taxes, sales taxes used for the wrong purposes. Sales taxes should be used to help city services, not personal taxes. People should talk about the huge pensions or upper management. Mayor, city council, CIOs, they should be on the 401K or Social Security. And the new employees for, maybe for the city can think about Social Security. Bigger salaries, bigger pension. It's out of control for top management. If you want free and open government, public servants, and its main concern is the public they serve. Private companies' main concern is profit. Public workers working for free and open government. We should make commissioners more honest. It's a public responsibility to look over politicians. DWP needs to pay its bills to pay for its water treatment, its sanitation, Tilm and Hyperion. That'd be put in general fund to be used for whatever the city council wants us to use it for. Trash fee was supposed to be paid for police. It was a lie. They didn't. The money for, it was diverted. It was money for other purposes, then divert it from that new purpose, probably for the CRA.
Thank you, Ms. Perman. We will continue public comment in just a moment, but we do have 12 members. If we could take up items 2 through 7, which we are holding, and also the other ordinances that didn't have cards, 20, 22, and 23. We can please prepare the roll on those items, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those will be approved, and if we can send 20, 22, and 23 forthwith, please. Our next speaker is Daniel Wright in our public comment, which we'll come back to, and then Ziggy Cruz will follow.
Good morning, council members. Daniel Wright, 467 Crane Boulevard. On behalf of the Vandy Camps Coalition. Council members, I wanted to bring to your attention that yesterday, a taxpayer lawsuit was filed against the Los Angeles Community College District and the City of Los Angeles with respect to the use of, or the illegal use of Proposition 39, voter-approved bond funds, to convert the Vandy Camps historic bakery building from classrooms into executive offices for unemployment programs funded by your workforce web board. This is an appalling misuse of bond funds, apparently encouraged and facilitated by the mayor's office in encouraging the board members of the Los Angeles Community College District to break their sacred trust to the voters. The voters who approved $50 million of measure double-A funds for the construction of a satellite community college campus facility at Vandy Camps as an adjunct to LA City College. The lease agreement entered into recently, or approved by the board with the City of Los Angeles proposes to hand that community college facility intended to, for the low-income and minority communities of Northeast to the city for an indefinite period of time, five years or more. That is why there's a taxpayer lawsuit. That's why the city is being sued. I encourage you to look at the lawsuit carefully when it arrives, and thank you for your attention. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Thank you for your activism on behalf of the folks in Northeast LA. Ziggy Cruz is our next speaker. Rick Nightengale will follow, also in Van Nuys.
As best I can guess.
Good morning.
Good morning, council members. Mr. President, I'm Ziggy Cruz, and I came here for two items which now have been continued. However, I'm not sure about will be here next week, so Mr. Blue urges, I'm here on behalf of Robert Blue, Mr. Blue urges the city council to know on these items, 10 and 30, once they become, come before you. According to the February 2010 Historic Resources Survey commissioned by the CRA for Hollywood, the structure of this house is Marley's Burgers, is specifically mentioned as one of the only three roadside eateries eligible for local listings. The CRA later dated July 15th, 2010, in response to the historical resource issue is weak. It implies that by not responding to the DEIR in February 09, Hollywood Heritage and the Los Angeles Conservancy made a determination that the site is not historical, not historical resource. Perhaps no response could also mean that both organizations did not have enough time to research the site for historical or conjugal issues, due to the fact that the CRA report, which identified the Marley structure, was not released until one year after the DEIR was circulated. Also, the fact that there is no impact on the city general fund does not relieve the City of Los Angeles or the CRA of its financial responsibility to the taxpayers and any investors involved in the issuance of debt. This means that the city should issue an LFP and have this site competitively bid for development opportunities. In September 2006, the current development team purchased this property at 1601 North Mines Route for $5.45 million. One month later, then they sold the same property to the CRA for the same amount. Although the CRA now owned the property, the developer continued to collect rent on this property, which they didn't own. I'd like to do that. Now the CRA is proposing to sell the property back to the same developer who sold it to them in the first place, but for a mere $825,000, allowing the developer to rake in a net gain of $4.63 million, while the taxpayers take, you know, the loss. Finally, the city and the CRA need to investigate the background of any development team before they do business with them. Haven't we learned anything from the financial data in the past? So please take a closer look at this when these items come before you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ziggy. We'll go next to Van Nuys. Again, Rick Nightengale is our next speaker. Then we'll come back to council chambers, and Bill Huie will follow. Good morning, sir.
Yeah, Rick Nightengale. I'll tell you, the lectures are coming up, even for the council, there're going to be six seats open. And then, I believe it was in the Sunday paper with Mayor Riordan, that they had a coalition meeting, or in that, to discuss who they think should run and so forth. I hope the city pays attention to this, because this is going to be an opportunity to get six brand-new people that have nothing to do with the people that are already on the council, to turn around and straighten some of this mess up. It's unbelievable what's going on. I don't know if it's true or not regarding the furlough days that you're doing that. I kind of heard that these people are going to get paid for all the furlough days that they take off. It's hard to believe if that's true, but I don't know, and I, and somebody said they read this, and if that's true, I just flat can't believe it. Where do you think you'd get the money for that purpose, that you're just postponing, paying the people? That, I thought it was, that you just had to take days off. But if you're going to have to pay them, you people have your head where it just didn't belong. You, I just don't know what you people are doing, because you just can't afford to do this. And then let's go back to the Arizona thing, it's coming up. You know that the turnaround, that Rhode Island has exactly the same law that the federal government, turnaround, as approved, that their police can pull over people and take them and call ICE? And they can do it? And the federal government is sponsoring it? Would you believe we have 20 states now that is, has a law going just like Arizona? Are you going to boycott 20 states out of all of us? They're going to keep adding up? You're going to just turn around and California going to be by themselves? That you think that you can just abandon everybody else? And let's get to Karen Bass, that she turned around and missed 41 meetings out of 63 because she's going for Congress? You people, when you run for another office, should have to leave the office you're in if you want to turn around and campaign to go to another one. That's fraud. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Bill Huie is our next speaker. After that is Michael Hunt. Good morning.
Good morning, members of the LA City Council. My name is Bill Huie. I'm the president of Fair Housing Coalition. Anyone that wants to reach me by email, it's billhuey@earthlink.net. In the City of LA, you have these advocate groups that go out to buildings when a building is put in reap, and they offer tenants an immediate 50% rent reduction. There is no tenant in LA that's going to say no to that. That's a form of racketeering. That is bankrupting landlords, and then these tenants advocacy groups tell the tenants that if the fire, if the smoke detectors come undone, they can keep the building in reap. So a lot of tenants all over the city are now doing damages to buildings, because they want to keep the buildings in reap, because they got a 50% rent incentive to do so. This is immoral, it's wrong, it's un-American. It's a form of racketeering supported by the City of LA. I really believe the council should look into this, and stop offering renters a 50% rent reduction, because this is going to come back in a big lawsuit to the city that's going to create public outrage. So they should look into it as soon as possible. Also, I understand if the city council doesn't like the Arizona law, everybody's entitled their own opinion, but to go and try to destroy Super Shuttle, and not 250 people out of a job, because you have a political ideology that's wrong, it's un-American, you can fight the Arizona in the media, whatever public opinion, but don't make these hard-working men and women unemployed. This is, this is beyond communism, it's just insane. So I say, keep Super Shuttle in LA, and stop that immediate 50% rent reduction. That, that is corrupting people all over the city, and it's destroying relationships between landlords and renters. And most landlords that own old buildings right now are selling them, they're taking their money out of LA, they're investing in other cities, and the poor people are finding less and less places to live. It corrupt, it's, nobody's the winner here. I'm Bill Huie, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Huie. Michael Hunt is our next speaker. After that will be Walter Bechtel.
Spider-Man says keep the jobs too for the people. You guys keep yourselves around the clock. My issue is Venice Beach, they're starting to issue me these tickets that are going to put me back down here in City Hall. This is a public service announcement. You don't want Michael Hunt back down here, so please do whatever you can to mitigate, you know, public service announcement. We don't want Michael Hunt back down here in City Hall. I don't want to come down here, and I want to stay at work. So, please do what you can, Spider-Man. This is a public service announcement. You know, keep Michael Hunt at work, not at City Hall.
Thank you, Spider-Man. After that Walter Bechtel will be our next speaker. And then Anka Patel in Van Nuys.
Morning. I'm not sure which Spider-Man you're referring to. Yeah, I wanted to say something about the City of Bell and their corruption problem. I wish we had the same spirit here in our city as they do in the City of Bell. The only difference, the problem in our city and the City of Bell is that the government officials aren't taking an increased pay, they're taking a little extra ear to the lobbyists and the people who are the contractors, who supposedly are going to help the people of the City of LA, like SRO. who supposedly are going to help the people of the city of L.A., like SRO, who supposedly were going to fix our hotel there and give us all a better place to stay and temporarily move us out. Instead, it became permanent. None of us can move back, and all our rents were doubled. And like the city lighting, we had to fund $25 million because why—it was all spent over the Christmas holiday with replacing lights and historical landmark lights right downtown here with brand-new lights, and nobody gave an accounting to where the old lights went to. Those dirty old lights. All they had to do was replace the housing and replace some of the lamps and maybe paint a few of them, but they didn't want to do that, because they can give them to their friends and to themselves as collector items and sell them later to somebody else. We supposedly don't have any money, but it looks like the money is going out to people that we don't need to put the money out to instead of back into the people. This is supposed to be a country of the people, for the people, by the people, not of the lobbyists, for the big interests, or for the entertainment people, who just keep telling you guys what to do, and you don't listen to anybody else.
Thank you very much. Our final speaker is in Van Nuys. It's Ankar Patel.
Hello again. So what are we investing in? Are we investing in libraries and parks? Are we investing in the future of our children? Or are we investing in homeless shelters and into the city family? Right? We put so much money back into the city family, into the unions, into the pensions, right? The city of Bell is going to have a problem when it comes to funding the pensions of their overpaid city workers. Now Proposition 18 in November—Proposition 18 in November is the Clean and Safe Water Supply Act of 2010. More or less—I'm not sure if that's the exact title—but in this, it's a bond measure. They're going to print $11,140 million. $11,140 million. We're going to pay so that they, whoever they is, can control our water supply. We're going to pay other people to control our water supply. $11,140 million they're going to print for water supply. We need to make sure that—before I vote on this, yes or no—we need to see how the DWP is going to tie into this. Are they going to get some of that money to fix our piping? Because there's $11 billion there. $11,140 million. And that money could definitely be used to help fix the piping, which has been a problem. And I think—what was the rate? We will replace our entire system over a 298-year timeframe? That's not okay. This money that's coming in, we need to see how it's going—or potentially going to come in, how it's going to tie into the DWP and the other water resources that we have. That's just Proposition 18. There are a lot of other propositions that have a lot to do with civic participation, council redistricting. Again, public transportation is going to be an issue. There are a couple propositions on public transportation. We have the resources. We have the people. We want to do these great things, but what are we investing in? Let's invest in public infrastructure.
Thank you very much, Mr. Patel. That will close our general public comment. If we could reconsider Number 18—I think we're going to continue that to an earlier date. If we can please open the roll on reconsideration and close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
And, Mr. Cardinals, we'd like to continue that to the 30th, which is this Friday. There's no objection. We'll continue that until the 30th. That will take us to items called special, the first of which is Number 15, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I appreciate you bringing this to the floor and wanting me to address it. Colleagues, as you know, a few weeks back, we essentially rose to the occasion and supported a resolution that spoke to how we can manage our own discretion as a council body in looking at our tax dollars. And what we addressed was an injustice that deals with racial profiling. We made it very clear that the law in Arizona was a step in a direction that is not befitting of an American country, society, or to an American as an individual. And as such, we took the action that we did take. Before us today, our set of contracts that rose—basically brought forth the issue of is there any resources or money from the city of Los Angeles going to Arizona? And before that—we get that question answered, I'd like to ask the staff to come to the center Do we have the boss here?
The boss is somewhere. She's in the building. I think she's in the back, sir.
Oh, no. Don't tell me she's in the back room. Is that what we're saying? Can we just—can we have her come forward, please?
Of course.
Well, what I'd like to do—as we're waiting for her, because I'm running out of time—I'll probably just push my button again.
Is she here? Yeah, we'll wait. A second.
Okay, just hold my time, please. Go to get here.
Sorry, is she—in the—she's in the building?
She is, sir.
Okay. Is she close by?
She's in the back speaking with a council member.
Okay. Why don't we—we just let her know? Thank you. We'll have the sergeant arm, let her know. It's in the bubble.
Good morning. Thank you, Council—Thank you for being here, Council President. Good morning.
Good morning.
I wanted to ask you, one, for the record, are any resources or monies from our taxpayers in the city of Los Angeles going into Arizona as a result of any of these contracts?
No. They're not.
Okay. That, to me, is a critical response, because the discretion and intent of a resolution was to exercise our discretion and how we reaffirm and/or support entities that are behaving in such a way, and would say are persecuting a whole population within this country. And we have that discretion to choose how our monies flow. The policy that allows us to understand when we have such a condition where our monies are going into Arizona, do we have that policy yet in place?
Mm-hmm.
That's my question to you.
Do we have that policy in place at the airport?
Yes.
No. Let me be clear on this contract. However, not only are no tax dollars going to the state of Arizona in this, the headquarters of this company are not in the state of Arizona, and this company actually pays us.
Put the microphone closer to you.
This company actually pays the airport, and the headquarters of this company are not in Arizona at all.
So it's important for the record to show that we indeed are consistent with being methodical in how we're addressing this issue.
Yes.
And that we do not have any funds going into Arizona. That's key. Colleagues, the message here is, this is not a symbolic gesture. We didn't do this resolution just to sound good. We did it because we truly believe we need to influence the environment so that not one American can be deported for the way they look. Rights, civil rights, human rights should not be violated because of the appearance of a person, and I think we're consistent in that way. What I am critical about and what I'm hoping yourself and your organization can come forth with a policy so that we can avoid this type of scenario, so that within your policy, you're doing the necessary—can I say this—screening, decision-making that's consistent with what this body has directed.
We are happy to follow the council's lead on that.
How soon can we get a policy that allows us to reinforce what the council wanted?
I'll have to talk to my board about it, and we'll have to get back to you.
Weeks, months, years?
Weeks.
Okay. I look forward to that.
Thank you.
Colleagues, I think we should move forward with these contracts, knowing that none of our resources are going to Arizona, and I appreciate this opportunity to amplify the injustices that are existing to a large population here in this great country, and that what they're doing is un-American, and it's something we should stand up for. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Hunt.
Thank you. You know, and there's two issues on this contract that were at the crux of us deciding whether or not to go with the extension. One was the issue of does this or doesn't it violate the spirit of the boycott that we adopted on the city council? And the other one was the issue of being out of compliance with the DVE goals. And I think that one was very troubling to me, that we didn't have a good handle on whether or not they were in compliance or out of compliance. And I know even that's a word we're probably not even supposed to use, because they are goals. But I think the goals are very important to Los Angeles. I mean, this is the kind of city we are. We are the international gateway, and these—these goals of minority, disadvantaged, women-owned businesses—that's important to us. So the fact that they could have been considered not needing those goals was a problem, and I think the airport has a—has a huge obligation to make sure that this is happening. I think currently even the policy is a little fuzzy on how we do it, putting all that burden on—in this situation, the drivers, as opposed to the company overall. So what I asked for in committee was maybe have you come back with a better sense of how you might tighten up this policy, or you may even look to rework it a little bit so that—again, even though these are independent contractors, ultimately, it was the company that probably also bears some responsibility for whether or not their drivers are, quote, filling out this paperwork. So that's one of the things I asked for. You might want to respond to that. And on the—the policy of the economic boycott that we did adopt, it was a little troubling for me to hear that the airport has not taken that up yet, because it was very clear in our policy that our proprietary departments also took up a policy that would, again, make sure that no new contracts were presented to us where the company was headquartered in Arizona, or were there contracts that were feasible to terminate as a result of our policy. So really feel like that should have happened by now, and it hasn't, because I don't think we all want to keep going through this. I mean, we feel very strongly about what we did, but as far as I'm concerned, I think the proprietary department should come up with this policy so that when something is presented to us, it's very clear, does this fit within the spirit of the boycott or not? And I think the burden should be on you, you know, to give us the direction on whether or not this fits the spirit. So really think that the airport should take that policy up. You should have a very clear policy on current contracts and future contracts, whether or not they fit within the spirit of the economic boycott that we adopted.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We will take that up with our board. I do want to respond to your previous question, which was the compliance with the DVE. I'm going to ask Debbie or Mike to be sure that what I'm saying here is correct, but we have worked with the city attorney's office to be sure that we take a more proactive approach to determining compliance, and are going to be asking all of our contractors to be reporting to us on a monthly basis or quarterly—monthly basis?
Monthly for paying, quarterly for receiving money.
Okay. Monthly or quarterly basis, depending on whether we're paying or they're paying us on what their DVE compliance is, which will be a reporting requirement that will require them then to take a look and not let inadvertent lapses happen, which is what I think happened in this instance.
Good. I appreciate that. I think that's—and if you could, again, quantify that or, you know, put that in writing and let us look at that, that would be—
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other members wishing to be heard on this item? Mr. Lavaj.
Say, I support the effort of this council on against 1070 in Arizona. Just a technical question, and I don't know if the city attorney answered. Is it a—what if a business is in California but does business for the business in Arizona? Does this have any effect on that? Can anybody answer that question? Because you're in a very unique industry. And I know in high-desert areas, airplanes are worked on. I know there's a climate in Arizona that is conducive to work on airplanes, and I just want to know, is there anything that—because what Ms. Hunt just said tickled my thought to say, is there anything that would impede you from having any work done on an aircraft or anything that's airport-related because of the relationship? In our country, there are climates that are conducive to certain things. And I know Arizona has a climate that's conducive to aircrafts, testing, maybe mechanical work, et cetera. Does this law impede any of that? Which—because Ms. Hunt just asked you a direct question, and Mr. Reyes asked a direct question for a time, which will come back in weeks, on this issue. How does it interrelate? Because the world now is connected—Super Shuttle is connected to France, you know? The world is connected. So how can you answer that?
Councilman, may I take an IOU on that? And when we do come back to you on this issue, it will be after we've done an inventory to answer exactly that question.
Okay. And I will say—stand right now, we do relationships with—have relations with Arizona as it relates to water and power, and we do have a power plant that we own in Arizona that we continue to get power from. Is that right, Mr. Miller? And we do have two plants that are right there. So there are some relationships that we still keep, that we know that. But we absolutely know that we are right, that we voice the concern for the people of Arizona, all people of Arizona, who are there in the issue of that law. So I wanted to state that, because I think it's important that we know what the picture
Mr. Reyes.
Yes. Colleagues, and I appreciate Councilman Lavaj's observations. You're right. It is complicated. When we start going into second, third, fourth relationships and subcontract, as someone else said, it turns into a big web. Where does it begin? Where does it start? It's not easy. I understand that. And yes, we do have property in Arizona that is generating power for us. It's generating revenue for us, and that's significant. And it was there before this insane law was put into place. But colleagues, I know it's sometimes hard to understand the significance and the meaning of this law. As another colleague of mine stated before, why should we get involved in this? This has nothing to do with us. But when I say us, I'm talking about every American. When you have American families being split apart, that should be important. If they don't look like you, to me, that's irrelevant. What's relevant is that we're Americans. So why would we allow that to happen? Why don't we take this position and amplify the injustice? So in response to Councilman Lavaj's comments, I think it is important that we understand the discretion that we have and that we are able to amplify that discretion in a way that reinforces American principles for American people. I made it very clear that if I go to Arizona—and this has happened, colleagues—I have friends and family who have been on a bus in Arizona, and an authority figure will come onto the bus and ask for identification. And if that person does not have identification, they're taken off the bus and deported. Now, we don't know what's going to happen to the family of that person. Does the child have his mom come back home? Does the father come back home? What kind of American society are we when we create these types of environments? That's what this is about. So I understand the monetary complications. I understand the business difficulty, but tell that to that child who right— tell that to that child who right now does not know where his mother and father is because they went to the grocery store and did not come back in an American city. That is the significance of this issue. And I would hope to understand the sincerity and the genuine concern for this country if we allow this behavior to continue. That's why I'm being so aggressive about my comments, and that's what it means so much to so many. And by the way, over 50% of this city reflects the subgroup population that's being subjected to this type of law in another state. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. That is the last speaker that we have. With that, we have the committee report before us. If we can please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes, and we'll send that forth with. If we can, go to the next item called special, please. Thank you all very much.
Nineteen, call special for cards.
All right, item nineteen, we have cards. Donna Pearman in Van Nuys. Thank you all for coming, we appreciate you being here. Thank you. Item nineteen is before us, Ms. Pearman?
Okay. Item nineteen, that is from the 911 system. Okay, tax rate special. Okay, it looks like, again, another tax rate that we'll be setting out for the people to be paying for, then we can't afford these tax rates. Whereas I realize we need a 911 system, but we need to have it done by a fair way, and I believe this one looks like tax rate, it looks like it's probably, and I'm not sure if it's another parcel tax. So, anyway, I don't know enough about it, so I think I'll just skip this one, I changed my mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pearman. That will close public comment on this item. If we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. If we can send that forth with without objection. And on twenty-one, Dr. Williams, if you'd like to come forward, we'll take up item twenty-one next.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Clyde Williams, 411 Fire Barrett Road, El Serrano, Northeast LA. So why am I interested in the West Side? Well, I used to actually do some work on occasion, and one of them was the Playa del Rey gas storage facility, and the fact that it was leaking when we did a study for the CPUC. Well, there's still some gas bubbling around in the various parts of Bayonne Lagoon, the reconstructed lagoon, and even within the Playa Vista area. So I would highly recommend that in this one you add a little covenants that provide adequate tax levy for the gas monitoring and remediation system within this particular product, project. Thank you.
Thank you, and why don't you sit tight because we're coming to twenty-four next, and I think you're our speaker on that, but let's take a vote on twenty-one. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. And on twenty-four, Dr. Williams, if you'd like to come forward. And we send that forth with, please, and twenty-four, if it passes as well.
On that, again, Dr. Clyde Williams, El Serrano. Okay, fire safety, this is a very good idea, a district for all additional costs for fire. Well, I think most of these parcels are probably in the brush fire clearance zone. However, wouldn't it be nice to put all of the 130,000 plots into a special assessment zone for brush clearance, so that you can get it out of the LA Fire Department and get it recognized as a special element? A lot of people in the flatlands, the lowlands, have to pay for protecting the hillsides, which are usually occupied by somewhat different classes of people. So I'd highly recommend that the 130,000 plots in the severe fire zones be established as a special district, and levies made according to the redeployment of our scarce fire resources to those areas during each summer, and the brush clearance by the LA Fire Department. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Williams. Are there any members who wish to be heard on this? If not, let's prepare the roll, please, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved, we'll go forth with as well. Next item, please.
Item twenty-nine, call special for cards.
Okay, item twenty-nine, we'll go to the Valley, Donna Pearman.
I'm ready. Okay, sorry about that other one. Anyway, we see, we have a CRA project, a Broadway sidewalk, Grand Central, about $600,000 for just one project, just like the Grand Avenue that'll take years to complete. The council members who okay these projects will probably term them out before they're finished. CRA projects are mostly for the most wealthy people with the smallest fraction for affordable housing. Do we really need lavish fountains and greenery for rich people? CRA is the reason why our city is in such deficit. They take our tax increment dollars and take it away from the city services that we badly need. We don't need to have more CRA projects, more big, huge buildings. What we need to do is save our city and save all our tax increment dollars for services we all use, not just for projects used for only the few, for the most business people and wealthy people. In the meantime, all the rest of our city services are going downhill. In the meantime, all our people, we should be pensions for only people over $100,000. They shouldn't be able to have a pension, only people under $100,000, excuse me, they should be paying into a 401K, is what I meant to say. And the other people shouldn't be bothered who make under $100,000 in the meantime, because our CRA is taking all our money. In the meantime, we need to look at the salaries of the CRA and find out how much they're making and why they make such huge salaries or just destroying our city. So I'll be against this one, and against the one in Hollywood, and against Grand Avenue projects. I'm just against CRA because I haven't seen them do anything good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That will close our public hearing on that. Any members wishing to be heard? If not, let's prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item thirty-five, call special to Councilmember Perry, and there are cards on that.
Okay, we'll hear the cards first, and then we'll call Ms. Perry, Dr. Williams, and then Ankar Patel in Van Nuys.
Dr. Clyde Williams, one of my favorite subjects, DWP. Well, why on this one? I would highly recommend that for item one E, that you also include all the facilities necessary to transmit the electricity from these various power sources to the city of LA, because this is where eventually you're going to have an involvement of the feed-in tariffs and other public-private partnerships that DWP may come up with, or with private facilities. So I'd highly recommend that the assertion of jurisdiction go beyond just the power stations that get the infrastructure that supports them. Also, I'd highly recommend that during the same Board of Water and Power meeting, they referenced Huron for a strategic plan for the DWP, a three-year program, but they've already consumed two years, and DWP's already issued the strategy for long-term development. So it seems strange not to include the Huron for review under 245. Thank you.
Thank you, Ankar Patel in Van Nuys.
Asserting jurisdiction over the Board of Water and Power, yes. We like that, we appreciate that. Now, all of these are talking about how much money you are going to limit them to spending, There has to be teeth behind that. So we appreciate the oversight and paying attention to what they are spending, but just like Dr. Williams said, it's not just saying that you are going to do this, but making sure that the infrastructure is there, that the project is worth the amount of money that they're going to be spending on it. Now, the feed-in tariff is very important, right? The UCLA School of, the Business School of, the Luskin Center and Los Angeles Business Council put together a 50-page report where they looked at feed-in tariffs in Ontario, Spain, Germany, other places where it has, some have been more or less successful. And the feed-in tariff is going to be very important for the solar market of Los Angeles, right? It's going to allow homeowners to sell electricity back to, unfortunately, or fortunately, the DWP. And it's up to you guys to make sure that you oversee this and make sure that the feed-in tariff is in the best interest of the people and not the best interest of the DWP, right? There's so much money on the table, right? $155 million for bonds of solar panels and ECAF, the whole $70 million fiasco. They were talking about renewable energy in a lockbox. That hasn't really panned out. We're spending billions of dollars on turbines here and there. There's a lot of things to this, and just, I'm rambling a little bit, I know, but oversight is good, but it has to have teeth. Right, oversight is good, but it has to have teeth. You have to be into each of these projects, you have to know where the money is going. And I've made it clear that it's difficult for me as on this side of the podium to find out what's happening in all of these projects, where the money's going, what it's being used for. It's up to you to continue to follow the money.
Thank you. Our first speaker is Ms. Perry, our chair, who called the special.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I appreciate the opportunity, and I want to explain why I have 245 these contracts that have passed out of the Board of Commissioners for the Department of Water and Power on July the 22nd. I was concerned that the staff discussion of these items at the board were limited, and I felt needed more fully, fuller vetting, because many of these very high-dollar contracts have come through this council ultimately for many years, and the council and our constituents are not always well-versed in what these contracts accomplish. So I am asking to impose a detailed five-year history on all the agreements and services between the department and the contracts that are before us today. Now, because there's some sensitivity on items D and E, I'll have a special meeting on those before the end of the week, and then set A, B, and C for hearing in committee. So I guess we have to vote on the 245 itself first, and then vote to send it, whether or not send it back to committee.
Thank you. Any other members wishing to be heard?
Okay, one vote, one vote.
Okay, we can please open the roll on assertion of jurisdiction? Close the roll and tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
Okay, that is asserted. Thank you. All right.
There's only one, one vote, only one vote is necessary, just send it back to committee. Okay, great. Thank you.
And we'll refer that to committee, thank you.
And then, do I need to make a placeholder for D and E for Friday, this council?
We'll work with you to do that, sure.
Okay, great, thank you.
No problem. All righty, next order of business, sorry, we have two reconsiderations. If we could reconsider thirty-four, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote to continue that till the sixth, okay?
Eleven ayes.
Okay, and if we can continue that till the sixth, Mr. Parks?
Yeah, you may have covered a couple of these, but I'd like to have nineteen through twenty-four.
They're all forthwith, we got you. And if we could move to suspend the rules to reconsider eighteen again, let's go ahead and open the rolls on suspending the rules first. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
A second change, you can't reconsider things twice without suspending the rules for folks, so we're going to go back to the original continuation date of the fourth, without objection. We'll continue that till the fourth instead of Friday, the 30th. If we can please, oh, oh, we did reconsider. Oh, now we have to reconsider, sorry. Prepare the roll and reconsideration, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
All right, and without objection, we'll continue that back to the fourth again. Next order of business.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk.
All right.
Councilmember LeBarge requests to be excused September 7th, 8th, 10th, and 14th for personal business, meets council policy.
All right, he's excused. Any other excuses?
Councilmember Corretti requests to be excused to arrive at 11:00 AM on December 15th, and for the entire meeting of September 10th, both for city business and both meet council policy.
All right, he's excused.
And Councilmember Garsetti requests to be excused to arrive at 10:30 on August 18th for city business, that meets council policy.
Outrageous, but he's excused.
And that would clear the desk.
All right, any announcements, colleagues? Do we have any adjourning motions? If we can please rise for adjourning motions.
Just want to announce the jobs committee will meet at two.
Okay, jobs committee at two o'clock today? I can ask everybody in council chambers to please rise for our adjourning motions. Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes, the LMU, which is a major modernization project, has its first public hearing tomorrow. So I say to my Westchester constituents, if you're interested, I put it up on my site where you can go in Westchester and hear initial presentation of LMU's plan. It's a $1.3 billion, 20-year modernization plan, and the community is going to show up tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? If not, Mr. Parks, if I could ask you to rise for our adjourning motions? And I'll start with Mr. Zion on this side.
Thank you, Mr. President's request. We adjourn in memory. Asadrinka De Silva passed away July 7th, July 18th, born in Sri Lanka, 51 years of age. Family came from Sri Lanka in 1990, cleaned homes, worked in the retail, ran a daycare center, all to support her family and put her three children through college. She helped care for her two young grandchildren, but also attended sewing classes at the local craft store, went to yoga at the West Valley YMCA several times a week, had planned on learning how to swim. Passed away Sunday, July 18th in a car accident that occurred at 2:00 AM in front of the family's receipt of home. Her husband Sunai and her five-year-old grandson were returning home from a family get-together in Cerritos. Final wish was to be cremated and have her ashes buried next to her mother's remains in a small town in Sri Lanka. May she rest in peace. Shandrika De Silva.
Thank you. Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Parks and I, and I'm sure Ms. Hahn will want to join in, unless anybody else, just to announce the passing of Congresswoman Diane Watson's mother, Dorothy, who died at the age of 100 years old. And we're waiting for the details of her funeral or celebration of her life, but suffice it to say, she was pretty amazing. I actually had the privilege of attending her 100th birthday. And when I would see the Congresswoman over the past several years, I would always remark to her, I'd see her mother getting off the bus here and there and everywhere. She was quite active and seemed to lead a very happy life, and she seemed to be a really happy person, was well taken care of by her children, including the Congresswoman. And so once we get the details, I think Mr. Parks wanted to say a few words, too.
No, I think it's something that, we're all looking for the details, but again, I don't know if you could have found a person that was more vibrant at 100 years of age, and the fact that she was certainly independent and certainly found her way around Los Angeles. But when you spoke with her, she had a significant history of this city, the things that occurred during her lifetime, and certainly she shared them at every opportunity. So it's going to be a great loss overall to the Watson family, but particularly on that whole issue of the era that she represented.
Absolutely. I could, yeah, we'll put all members on that, if I could join you on that, too. She's somebody who had the good fortune of meeting her a number of times, and I know how much the Congresswoman just loved her mother, and part of her recent retirement from, or upcoming retirement from Congress was to spend time with her mother in these very fragile years. But she was an amazingly strong woman, and I know that Congresswoman Watson has some incredible genes to have lived to 100 years. We know that Congresswoman Watson is going to absolutely follow in a great tradition, but we all mourn her and hope that she rests in peace. Other adjourning motions? Yeah, Mr. LeBarge?
I bless her mother's memory, I know, it was very special.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes?
I'd like to adjourn memory of Colin Lai. Colin Lai was an amazing Angelino who worked a lot in Chinatown throughout the region. He was a very, how can I say this, optimistic, but he would challenge you on issues, and for example, when we're building the goal line in Chinatown, the station, issues of impact and how business would be essentially affected, how the employees would benefit, how the unions would be impacted. He raised all these issues, and I'm going to miss him. And I'd like to just come back and give you a more detailed background of Mr. Lai. But I did want to adjourn and attribute to his contribution and his presence in Los Angeles, because it is significant. I'm not doing him justice today, but I'll come back with the detail, but... I'm not doing him justice today, but I'll come back with the detail, but I'd like to adjourn the memory of Colin Li.
Thank you. Other adjourning motions, Mr. Labange?
Members, life too young. I'd like to ask we adjourn in memory of Joseph Peña Santana, who came to this country from Guadalajara, Mexico, with his parents many years ago, went to Sallesian High School, was a great student at Sallesian, and worked his way up to earn a doctorate in education in postgraduate work. He worked as a principal at John Adams School in Los Angeles, where he served the staff for 11 years, very active in the parish of our Mother of Good Counsel in the Las Feliz District, and he survived by his wife Linda and their five children. I ask we adjourn in memory of a very special person, Joseph Peña Santana.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. If there are other adjourning motions, Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll? Will next be in session tomorrow. That will be Wednesday, the 28th of July. In the meantime...